This is a private meeting of the City Council that's incorporated in the annuals meetings known as of 2015, which was filed in the City Clerk's office and posted on the bulletin board on December 23rd, 2014, and sent to the Star Ledger and the Home News Tribune in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Law of New Jersey. Roll call. Councilman Questa.
Here.
Councilman Roldan.
Here.
Councilman Torres.
Here.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilman Conner.
Here.
Councilman Sedanion.
Here.
Councilman Gorman.
Here.
Councilman Maza.
Here.
President Perkins has asked. Here, nine members present. Will you all please rise for the prayer and the salute to the flag and invite Councilman Kevin Conner.
May God bless America, and may all the nations be to the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. And may all the nations be to the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. And may all the nations be to the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Before we move into public speaking, I believe my colleague, Councilman Carlos Torres, would like to make a presentation.
I'm going to ask my colleague, Manny Rorod, to join me. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The month of February, we celebrate African-American Heritage Month, and today is a special day, not only for me, but for the city of Elizabeth. Several weeks ago, I had the opportunity to take or accompany 150 Elizabeth residents to the movies and see the movie Selma. It's a movie about Martin Luther King's life. It was very graphic. There were violent scenes in there. I had kids as young as seven to senior citizens attend it. I wanted to do that for a reason, because I wanted to show the kids exactly what Martin Luther King went through. But today, I have someone here in the audience that was part of a movement, not any movement, but the Civil Rights Movement. I have an individual here that walked with a doctor, King, not any doctor, King, Dr. Martin Luther King. So today is my great pleasure to honor and present Ms. Elaine Johnson with an accommodation for the city of Elizabeth. Ms. Elaine Johnson. Ms. Johnson, I just want to say thank you for your courage, your strength. As a father of three Hispanic and African-American children, I want to say thank you for opening up the doors. I know Dr. Martin Luther King and the rest get all the glory, but it's the people, the people, that's what really counts. So thank you. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Manny Rorod.
Thank you, Councilman. You know, I had an opportunity back at the mall university to take a whole year on the life of Martin Luther King Jr., and it must have been a phenomenal experience to be part of the march. And, you know, all I see it on film, and we all might have seen it on film over recent years, and now the reenactment with the movie Selma, but it's different, and I think, Elaine, you had the experience that a lot of people will never have. And on behalf of the City Council, in recognition of African-American history, the City Council of the city of Elizabeth would like to commend Elaine Johnson for her participation in the Bloody Sunday in Selma, Alabama. And between 1961 and '64, the Student Nonviolent Coordinated Committee led a voting registration campaign in Selma to seat at Dallas County, Alabama, a small town with a record of consistent resistance to black voting. Now, February 17th, 1965, protester Jimmy Lee Jackson was faked as fatally shot by an Alabama state trooper, and in response, a protest march from Selma to Montgomery was kept up for March 7. Six hundred marchers assembled in Selma on Sunday, March 7, 1965, led by John Lewis and other SNCC and Southern Christian Leadership Conference activists, crossed the Edmond Pettus Bridge over the Alabama River on route to Montgomery. Just short of the bridge, they found their way blocked by Alabama state troopers and local police, who ordered them to turn around. When the protesters refused, the officers shot, tear gassed, and waded into the crowd, beating the nonviolent protesters with billy clothes, and ultimately hospitalizing over 50 people. Therefore, it is resolved that the City Council of the city of Elizabeth hereby respectfully recognizes Elaine Johnson for participating and being part of that Bloody Sunday in Selma, Alabama, in 1965, and this resolution will be set forth in our history of the City Council. Congratulations.
I just want to thank Ms. Johnson, because it wasn't for people like her in the trenches, like my colleague stated. You know, Martin Luther King, yeah, of course, he deserves all the accolades, but there were so many other people who took part in freeing us as a people and for voting. If it wasn't for what you have done, I'm standing on your shoulders, it's because of women like you, the all the unsung heroes of the Civil Rights Movement here in America. It's because of people, because of people like you, I can stand here, I can sit here, I can be a councilperson. So can my council colleague, Councilman Gorman. It wasn't for the African-Americans that fought, for all of us. You know, they fought for America. It wasn't about a black thing. It was about America living up to its true creed, that all men and women are created equal. And Dr. Martin Luther King held America to its own constitution, and because of that, I can be who I am today. So thank you so much. God bless you, and we love you, and pray that you live up to your limits. God bless you.
Have a light, pray. Thanks to everyone, and may God bless all of you. I didn't tell you that she cheats and carves.
We have one other heroine, one other African-American highlight that we'd like to bring to the audience, and that is Senator Commissioner Winona Abrams, who is the chairwoman for the Housing Authority here in the city of Elizabeth. Let's get Winona here, because she is a tenured resident, and she is the first tenured resident who is now the chairwoman of the Housing Authority. I know Nancy Pelosi on the Housing Authority with her, and we just want to continue to recognize you. You know, I believe in giving people their roses while they can smell it. Give them their flowers while it makes a difference in their lives. So Winona, I know the road you trod has been rough. You've been there, stayed in the trenches, and you endured, and now you have ascended to the chairwoman for the Housing Authority, for the commissioners, and it means a lot to so many people. You worked your way up, worked for the Housing Authority, you were involved with the unions, you lived in the Housing Authority, now you make policy for the other residents, and that means so much. So on behalf of my colleagues, myself, Nancy Pelosi served with Councilman Gonzalez, and Councilman Torres, and Councilman Manny, former Councilman, current Councilman, so we know your works, and your works speak for you. So we want to say to you, God bless you, keep doing what you're doing, because we still need you to fight that fight, the good fight. And if you want to say a couple words, I don't know, but colleagues, I know Nancy wants to say something. Come on, he said, yeah, I want to say something.
Thank you, Councilman. It's a real pleasure this evening to have Winona. I've known Winona now for several years, and I've had the pleasure of serving with her on the Housing Authority for a number of years now. And one thing I can tell you about Winona is that Winona really stands out. She sticks up for the residents. She is a tremendous advocate for the residents, for the Housing Authority, you know, for the seniors, and for everybody, anybody that she can help out and lend a hand to, you can count on Winona to do that, and we're thankful, we're very grateful that she is a part of the Housing Authority. We have even this here with us, Kathy Hart, Deputy Director, that's how much of an impact this woman has had in the city of Elizabeth and with the Housing Authority. Winona, thank you so much. God bless you, and make it many more years. And I hope you serve the city of Elizabeth.
I would just like to say thank you, everybody. Yes, the vote wasn't easy. It was a hard, long journey, but I'm not counting yet, so I will continue to climb. So it's an honor to be represented here today. May there be more of us out there than maybe one day standing here receiving awards and accolades too. So I'd just like to say thank you very much.
Thank you for showing that.
She likes to catch. Come on. DJ. 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 You know, I had an opportunity back at the mall university to take a whole year on the life of Martin Luther King Jr., and it must have been a phenomenal experience to be part of the march. And, you know, all I see it on film, and we all might have seen it on film over recent years, and now the reenactment with the movie Selma, but it's different, and I think, Elaine, you had the experience that a lot of people will never have. And on behalf of the City Council, in recognition of African-American history, the City Council of the city of Elizabeth would like to commend Elaine Johnson for her participation in the Bloody Sunday in Selma, Alabama, and between 1961 and '64, the Student Nonviolent Coordinated Committee led a voting registration campaign in Selma to seat at Dallas County, Alabama, a small town with a record of consistent resistance to black voting. Now, February 17th, 1965, protester Jimmy Lee Jackson was faked as fatally shot by an Alabama state trooper, and in response, a protest march from Selma to Montgomery was kept up for March 7. Six hundred marchers assembled in Selma on Sunday, March 7, 1965, led by John Lewis and other SNCC and Southern Christian Leadership Conference activists, crossed the Edmond Pettus Bridge over the Alabama River on route to Montgomery. Just short of the bridge, they found their way blocked by Alabama state troopers and local police, who ordered them to turn around. When the protesters refused, the officers shot, tear gassed, and waded into the crowd, beating the nonviolent protesters with billy clothes, and ultimately hospitalizing over 50 people. Therefore, it is resolved that the City Council of the city of Elizabeth hereby respectfully recognizes Elaine Johnson for participating and being part of that Bloody Sunday in Selma, Alabama, in 1965, and this resolution will be set forth in our history of the City Council. Congratulations.
I just want to thank Ms. Johnson, because it wasn't for people like her in the trenches, like my colleague stated. You know, Martin Luther King, yeah, of course, he deserves all the accolades, but there were so many other people who took part in freeing us as a people and for voting. If it wasn't for what you have done, I'm standing on your shoulders, it's because of women like you, the all the unsung heroes of the Civil Rights Movement here in America. It's because of people, because of people like you, I can stand here, I can sit here, I can be a councilperson. So can my council colleague, Councilman Gorman. It wasn't for the African-Americans that fought, for all of us. You know, they fought for America. It wasn't about a black thing. It was about America living up to its true creed, that all men and women are created equal, and Dr. Martin Luther King held America to its own constitution, and because of that, I can be who I am today. So thank you so much. God bless you, and we love you, and pray that you live up to your limits. God bless you.
Have a light, pray. Thanks to everyone, and may God bless all of you. I didn't tell you that she cheats and carves.
We have one other heroine, one other African-American highlight that we'd like to bring to the audience, and that is Senator Commissioner Winona Abrams, who is the chairwoman for the Housing Authority here in the city of Elizabeth. Let's get Winona here, because she is a tenured resident, and she is the first tenured resident who is now the chairwoman of the Housing Authority. I know Nancy Pelosi on the Housing Authority with her, and we just want to continue to recognize you. You know, I believe in giving people their roses while they can smell it. Give them their flowers while it makes a difference in their lives. So Winona, I know the road you trod has been rough. You've been there, stayed in the trenches, and you endured, and now you have ascended to the chairwoman for the Housing Authority, for the commissioners, and it means a lot to so many people. You worked your way up, worked for the Housing Authority, you were involved with the unions, you lived in the Housing Authority, now you make policy for the other residents, and that means so much. So on behalf of my colleagues, myself, Nancy Pelosi, you serve with Councilman Gonzalez, and Councilman Torres, and Councilman Manny, former Councilman, current Councilman, so we know your works, and your works speak for you. So we want to say to you, God bless you, keep doing what you're doing, because we still need you to fight that fight, the good fight. And if you want to say a couple words, I don't know, but colleagues, I know Nancy wants to say something. Come on, he said, yeah, I want to say something.
Thank you, Councilman. It's a real pleasure this evening to have Winona. I've known Winona now for several years, and I've had the pleasure of serving with her on the Housing Authority for a number of years now. And one thing I can tell you about Winona is that Winona really stands out. She sticks up for the residents. She is a tremendous advocate for the residents, for the Housing Authority, you know, for the seniors, and for everybody, anybody that she can help out and lend a hand to, you can count on Winona to do that, and we're thankful, we're very grateful that she is a part of the Housing Authority. We have even this here with us, Kathy Hart, Deputy Director, that's how much of an impact this woman has had in the city of Elizabeth and with the Housing Authority. Winona, thank you so much. God bless you, and make it many more years. And I hope you serve the city of Elizabeth.
I would just like to say thank you, everybody. Yes, the vote wasn't easy. It was a hard, long journey, but I'm not counting yet, so I will continue to climb. So it's an honor to be represented here today. May there be more of us out there that maybe one day standing here receiving awards and accolades too. So I'd just like to say thank you very much.
And I also want to thank all my seniors for coming out tonight. Thank you.
Okay, public speaking. Is there anyone here wishing to address City Council? Please state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to speak.
Good evening. I could deliver to the experience, but I want to leave you out of the name. My name is James Carrion, and I chair the legislative chapter of People Talking with Asian Progress, and I'm going to battle against the hollow means. Winona Aklin, and Elaine Johnson. As a matter of fact, Elaine is a member of People Talking with Asian Progress. Going, of course, on 2014's electoral election, candidate Elaine Jackson was ostracized, and both his character and reputation was maligned. When representatives of continued progress led by the Republican Party, went on a group of smear campaigns and attempted to keep him from winning the seat on the school board. Now, I understand that politics will be politics, however, the integrity of man with false and unfounded accusations such as saying he was arrested for assault when he was asked in court for questioning and later released, such plenty, he was never found guilty or convicted. However, the one accusation that disturbed me the most as the civil human rights activism was the false allegation of him disliking our Hispanic and Latino brothers and sisters. Such allegations lacked any validity or credibility, nonetheless, was all done deliberately by a bottomless attempt to divide the Black and Latino people of Elizabeth. Just imagine, for once, your families are local generations in your respective communities or neighborhoods, and then you begin to receive a barrage of negative campaign propaganda assassinating your character or naming you a racist. Now try to put yourself in the shoes of Bayou Crewe Jackson, the lovely wife of Elaine Jackson. How would you feel if your neighbors started sneaking and pointing their fingers at you, and then you go home to work, and your colleagues are wondering if your spouse is doing their racism? Or when your kid returns home from school upset because of Spanish-American heat, or selling against their relationship because of some false propaganda? How would you feel? Since they failed to mention the truth about Elaine Jackson and none of the false accusations were refuted, allow me the opportunity to speak about Elaine Jackson, be all of my love. Malina has been happily married to his high school sweetheart, Bayou, for 20 years, same room. He's a proud father of five siblings, four of whom are honors students, one of whom attended Temple University, one from both scholarships. His other son, Tahia, he just hit the brink of shock in Delaware. He picked Rosa Patrick and went viral, seeing her news as well. Malik also was an all-star running back for Thunderfield, a high school football team that won the state title. That same year, Malik was instrumental in helping the basketball team win the state fire. Malik also won the state's high jump competition in track field at his high school. He received a scholarship to play collegiate league football, where he starred at Roma University, played professional football in Kansas. Then he thought less of himself. When he returned home, he started a business called Train Today's Athletes, where he trained students to excel athletically and athletically, regardless of their color, skin, or religious background. So with that said, now that the truth has been told, I would hope the City Council will be on the right side of history by passing a resolution to condemn any and all race-baiting and ritual language that was used towards Elaine Jackson, and furthermore, speak out against the blatant attempt to divide our city on racial boundaries. Thank you.
Last question for the US City Council. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. My name is Fosa Moreno, and I'm a community woman in District, Mayor of District Two, and I'm here today to support Elaine Jackson, and I want to ask you to stop the misinformation you receive every day. Our community deserves it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other residents of Tax Payers who should address the US City Council? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion speaking of the meeting and move on to public hearings.
Madam President, if I may, right here.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Madam President, we've heard of two speakers, and I know there's many in the audience who feel the same way, in that Malik Jackson was completely mis-presented to the public by the opposition, as the speaker mentioned, race-baiting type of politics. It not only happened to him, it happened to Maria Carvalho and others in this room. Over time, we've all been subject to that type of politics, and I'd like to, at this time, ask our city attorney and our city clerk to prepare a resolution that would, in essence, ask that anyone running for office to not punish or put out false information on someone, especially putting someone forth as a racist or anything else, anti-Hispanic, anti-black, anti-white, whatever it is. And I'd like the City Council to consider supporting said resolution, and we hope that any candidate going forward will follow that request. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, any other comments? Councilman Questa?
Madam President, I'd like to support the social resolution, and I have to say that during this particular campaign, as a Cuban American, I was very offended by the false side decisions against Malik, someone whom I considered an honorable person, a family member. When I met with his defense during the election, they accused me of being a criminal. So Madam President, I think we should examine the record and find out or discuss who are the real criminals. In my opinion, the real criminals are those that were arrested, stealing the loans money from our case. The real criminals are those who refused to pay about $75,000 that they offered children of less than. The real criminals are the board attorneys that were also arrested for illegal behavior. The real criminals are those who send text messages at midnight telling you that you should change before you die, and I have all those messages saved. So in conclusion, I would say that I'm extremely proud to call Malik Jackson my friend. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Are any of you comments? Mr. Jackson, he is a son of the city of Elizabeth, and to be aligned with such hatred and bigotry, you know, it's a shame as we, me, we, the American people, particularly African-Americans, as we celebrate 50 years of marching on Washington and Selma, and all of these things that were to unite America as one community. Here we are, 50 years later, still have people speaking of racial hatred and bigotry based on nothing, nothing at all, and I'm just appalled that school board candidates would align themselves with such dirty politics, to the point where they don't care about our children. Mr. Questa, Councilman Questa, you alluded to the fact regarding the legal fees. In six months, close to $3 million in legal fees. For what? For what? Just to keep control over our school board in six months? $3 million in legal fees. Meanwhile, they cut buses for three and four-year-olds. They don't care about our children. They're out of their hole trying to get to school. Meanwhile, they stopped Saturday programs for Richmond and recreation for students throughout the district. Meanwhile, you have children that still don't have proper educational tools. You still have classrooms overcrowded. You have a special needs district program that is in so much disrepair. You have parents calling and crying and trying to find ways whereby their children can be educated properly because of their special and fragile needs. But meanwhile, it's okay for them to spend $3 million in six months' period on legal fees. We have some real problems here in our school district, and yes, I will be supporting the resolution, and we will be voting on that resolution tonight, and we're just going to move forward, because I always believe on the side to be on the right side. It may not be a popular side, it may not be the political side, but I choose the right side, the next God's side, and I will continue to live out my life and work for the residents here in this city during the right thing. It may not be popular, and a lot of times, I may stand alone, but I will be standing on the side of God, and I will be supporting the resolution to strike down anyone who wants to talk about race and bigotry and hate is just should not be in our society today. We have fought long and hard here in America to make things equal for all citizens, regardless of how you arrive to these peaceful shores, and we need to continue as one body. This council should continue as one body to not play into petty racism and bigotry that will spew us apart. We should be united as one city, and that's how we'll continue to advocate for the city. So thank you, colleagues, for bringing that to my consciousness, and we will be supporting that resolution, you see?
Madam President?
Yes, as the floor leader, you can speak.
I also too will be supporting this resolution. I have known Malik Jackson for 35 years. We've been friends since we were children. I just find it hard as an elected official, I don't see color, I don't see race, I see people. So certain comments like that is dividing this city. There's ways that we can work together, but when you attack someone personally, I just, I can't support you, I can't support something like that. So people who make comments are like that, and people who believe comments are fools. So anybody that knows Malik Jackson or gets to know Malik Jackson knows that he has one of the biggest hearts, again, born and raised here in the community, would break his back for you. So again, I will be supporting that resolution, and thank you for subting.
Thank you. Are any of you other comments? Okay, public hearings.
Ordinance number 4550. An ordinance to vacate the remaining portion of Bridle Street from Trenton Avenue in a southeastern direction to the right-of-way line of the New Jersey Turnpike.
You heard a reading of ordinance number 4550. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance number 4550? Seeing none, close that public portion speaking for ordinance number 4550.
Ordinance number 4551. Amend ordinance number 2707 adopted September 27, 1994, entitled Rooming Houses, specifically to change the definition of the licensing authority to the Department of Health and Human Services, and to delete the Rooming and Boarding House Site Licensing Board.
You heard it. It's a very important issue. 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 It's a very important issue.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Jose Moreno and I'm a community volunteer in District Two. And I'm here today to support Malika Jackson. And I want to ask you to stop the misinformation you receive every day. Our community deserves it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other residents or taxpayers who should attend to the US City Council? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion speaking of the meeting and move on to public hearings.
Madam President, if I may, right here.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Madam President, we've heard two speakers and I know there's many in the audience who feel the same way in that Malika Jackson was completely mis-presented to the public by the opposition as the speaker mentioned, race-baiting type of politics. It not only happened to him, it happened to Maria Carvalho and others in this room. Over time, we've all been subject to that type of politics. And I'd like to, at this time, ask our city attorney and our city clerk to prepare a resolution that would, in essence, ask that anyone running for office to not punish or put out false information on someone, especially putting someone forth as a racist or anything else, anti-SPANIC, anti-black, anti-white, whatever it is. And I'd like the City Council to consider supporting said resolution. And we hope that any candidate going forward will follow that request. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, any other comments?
Yes, Madam President.
Councilman Questa?
Madam President, I'd like to support the social resolution. And I have to say that during this particular campaign, as a Cuban American, I was very offended by the false allegations against Malika, someone whom I considered an honorable person, a family member. When I met with his friends during the election, they accused me of being criminal. So, Madam President, I think we should examine the record and find out or discuss who are the real criminals. In my opinion, the real criminals are those that were arrested, stealing the loans money from our kids. The real criminals are those who refused to pay about $75,000 that they all sold them of the script. The real criminals are the board attorneys that were also arrested for illegal behavior. The real criminals are those who send text messages at midnight telling you that you should change before you die. And I have all those messages saved. So, in conclusion, I would say that I'm extremely proud to call Malika Jackson my friend. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Are any other comments? Mr. Jackson, he is a son of the city of Elizabeth. And to be aligned with such hatred and bigotry, you know, it's a shame as we, me, we, the American people, particularly African-Americans, as we celebrate 50 years of marching on Washington and Selma and all of these things that were to unite America as one community. Here we are, 50 years later, still have people speaking of racial hatred and bigotry based on nothing, nothing at all. And I'm just appalled that school board candidates would align themselves with such dirty politics to the point where they don't care about our children. Mr. Questa, Councilman Questa, you alluded to the fact regarding the legal fees. In six months, close to $3 million in legal fees. For what? For what? Just to keep control over our school board in six months? $3 million in legal fees. Meanwhile, they cut buses for three and four-year-olds. They don't care about our children. They're out of their hole trying to get to school. Meanwhile, they stopped Saturday programs for Richmond and recreation for students throughout the district. Meanwhile, you have children that still don't have proper educational tools. You still have classrooms overcrowded. You have a special needs district program that is in so much disrepair. You have parents calling and crying and trying to find ways whereby their children can be educated properly because of their special and fragile needs. But meanwhile, it's okay for them to spend $3 million in six months' period on legal fees. We have some real problems here in our school district. And yes, I will be supporting the resolution. And we will be voting on that resolution tonight. And we're just gonna move forward. Because I always believe on the side to be on the right side. It may not be a popular side, it may not be the political side, but I choose the right side, the next God's side. And I will continue to live out my life and work for the residents here in this city during the right thing. It may not be popular, and a lot of times I may stand alone, but I will be standing on the side of God. And I will be supporting the resolution to strike down anyone who wants to talk about race and bigotry and hate is just should not be in our society today. We have fought long and hard here in America to make things equal for all citizens, regardless of how you arrive to these peaceful shores. And we need to continue as one body, this council should continue as one body, to not play into petty racism and bigotry that will spew us apart. We should be united as one city. And that's how I will continue to advocate for the city. So, thank you colleagues for bringing that to my consciousness. And we will be supporting that resolution, you see?
Madam President?
Yes, as the floor leader, you can speak.
I also too will be supporting this resolution. I have known Malika Jackson for 35 years. We've been friends since we were children. I just find it hard as an elected official, I don't see color, I don't see race, I see people. So, certain comments like that is dividing this city. There's ways that we can work together, but when you attack someone personally, I just, I can't support you, I can't support something like that. So, people who make comments are like that, the people who believe comments are fools. So, anybody that knows Malika Jackson or gets to know Malika Jackson knows that he has one of the biggest hearts, again, born and raised here in the community, would break his back for you. So, again, I will be supporting that resolution. And thank you for subuting.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Ordinance number 4550. An ordinance to vacate the remaining portion of Brighton Street from Trenton Avenue in a southeasterly direction to the right-of-way line of the New Jersey Turnpike.
You heard a reading of ordinance number 4550. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance number 4550? Seeing none, close that public portion speaking for ordinance number 4550.
Ordinance number 4551. Amend ordinance number 2707 adopted September 27, 1994, entitled Rooming Houses, specifically to change the definition of the licensing authority to the Department of Health and Human Services and to delete the Rooming and Boarding House Site Licensing Board.
You heard a reading of ordinance number 4551. Is there anyone here wishing to address the council on ordinance number 4551? Seeing none, close that public portion speaking for ordinance number 4551.
Ordinance number 4552. Grant an encroachment permit to Environmental Management Associates, Inc., Farmingdale, New Jersey, to install a replacement monitoring well within the right-of-way on the east side of Neck Lane.
You heard a reading of ordinance number 4552. Is there anyone here wishing to address the council on ordinance number 4552? Seeing none, close that portion.
Ordinance number 4553. Amend Chapter 10.12.50 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth, entitled Prohibiting Turns on Red Signal, specifically to add East Broad Street at Magnolia Avenue and Jake Street at Elizabeth Avenue at all times.
You heard a reading of ordinance number 4553. Is there anyone here wishing to address the City Council on ordinance number 4553? Seeing none, close that portion of the meeting. And with the consent of my colleagues, I would like to dispense a reading of the petitions and communications and reports of city officers and move on ordinance on first reading.
Ordinance number 4555. An ordinance authorizing agreement with Union County College, Cranford, New Jersey, to permit temporary use of city-owned property within the vicinity of the college campus at 12 West Jersey Street and 40 West Jersey Street for a self-contained 80-foot trailer to train unemployed and underemployed residents to become machinists from April 1, 2015 through September 30, 2015, at no cost to the city.
You heard a reading of ordinance number 4555. What is your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a vote, Madam President.
Move then second, and are there any remarks? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Grover?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Canary?
Aye.
Councilman Sodano?
Aye.
Councilman Gollman?
Aye.
Councilman Maza?
Aye.
President Perkins-Augusti.
Aye, ordinance passes on first reading.
Ordinance number 4556. Amend Chapter 5.1.60 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth, entitled Towing of Vehicles from Private Property Fees and Charges, and Chapter 5.1.90, entitled Mercantile License Fees, specifically to increase said fees.
You heard a reading of ordinance number 4556. What is your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a vote, Madam President.
Move then second, and are there any remarks? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Grover?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Canary?
Aye.
Councilman Sodano?
Aye.
Councilman Gollman?
Aye.
Councilman Maza?
Aye.
President Perkins-Augusti.
Ordinance passes. Aye, ordinance passed. The ordinance passes on first reading. Public hearing and further consideration of the foregoing ordinance which shall take place at the City Council meeting to be notified March 10, 2015, at 7:30 p.m. Ordinance number, ordinance on final passage, ordinance number 4550.
Ordinance number 4550. An ordinance to vacate the remaining portion of Brighton Street from Trenton Avenue in a southeasterly direction of the right-of-way line of the New Jersey Turnpike.
You heard a reading of ordinance number 4550. What is your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a vote, Madam President.
Move then second, are there any remarks? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Grover?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Canary?
Aye.
Councilman Sodano?
Aye.
Councilman Gollman?
Aye.
Councilman Maza?
Aye.
President Perkins-Augusti.
Aye, ordinance passes on final.
Ordinance number 4551. Amend ordinance number 2707, adopted September 27, 1994, entitled Rooming Houses, specifically to change the definition of the licensing authority to the Department of Health and Human Services and to delete the Rooming and Boarding House Site Licensing Board.
You heard a reading of ordinance number 4551. What is your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a vote, Madam President.
Move then second, and are there any remarks? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Grover?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Canary?
Aye.
Councilman Sodano?
Aye.
Councilman Gollman?
Aye.
Councilman Maza?
Aye.
President Perkins-Augusti.
Aye, ordinance passes on final.
Ordinance number 4552. Grant an encroachment permit to Environmental Management Associates, Inc., Farmingdale, New Jersey, to install a replacement monitoring well within the right-of-way on the east side of Neck Lane.
You heard a reading of ordinance number 4552. What is your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a vote, Madam President.
Move then second, and are there any remarks? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Grover?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Canary?
Aye.
Councilman Sodano?
Aye.
Councilman Gollman?
Aye.
Councilman Maza?
Aye.
President Perkins-Augusti.
Aye, ordinance passes on final.
Ordinance number 4553. Amend Chapter 10.12.50 of the Code of the City of Elizabeth, entitled Prohibiting Turns on Red Signal, specifically to add East Broad Street at Magnolia Avenue and Jake Street at Elizabeth Avenue at all times.
You heard a reading of ordinance number 4553. What is your pleasure?
Move the ordinance for a vote, Madam President.
Move then second, and are there any remarks? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Grover?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Canary?
Aye.
Councilman Sodano?
Aye.
Councilman Gollman?
Aye.
Councilman Maza?
Aye.
President Perkins-Augusti.
Aye, ordinance passes on final.
Madam President, an elected motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call on the suspension.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Grover?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Canary?
Aye.
Councilman Sodano?
Aye.
Councilman Gollman?
Aye.
Councilman Maza?
Aye.
President Perkins-Augusti. Letter dated February 23, 2015, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary and appropriate to provide an additional rental housing program deferred payment forgivable loan on the property located at 46466 Spring Street in the amount of $254,000. Letter dated February 19, 2015, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the submission of a request to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Elizabeth Development Company to be designated as a community development business organization within the city of Elizabeth. Letter dated February 23, 2015, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting to amend the resolution dated February 10, 2015, which authorized community development block grant fiscal year '40 spending claims from 38 public services grants totaling $454,907.60 and 3 public facilities grants totaling $40,850, 2 39 public service grants totaling $479,907.60, and 2 public facilities grants totaling $15,850.
You heard a reading of the resolutions. What is your pleasure?
There's also a resolution asking for cities that have tax-exempt properties to get more state aid. We're gonna put that on to us under the suspension or is that something for next week?
No, they don't have that.
Okay.
Let's ask it. That's an email? Who is it from?
From the town of Scadaway, the township of Mont Paul. I'll bring it up next week, that's fine.
Okay. What is that, Henry?
Yeah. I'll bring it up next week.
Yeah, copy it for us. Bagged and finished.
I'll bring it up next week. Thank you. Sorry, Madam President.
Move the resolution for a vote, Madam President.
Move then second, and are there any remarks? Any comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Grover?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Canary?
Aye.
Councilman Sodano?
Aye.
Councilman Gollman?
Aye.
Councilman Maza?
Aye.
President Perkins-Augusti.
Aye, more resolutions passed. New business in compliance with State Fiscal Year 2012 Appropriations Act, City Council is requested to approve all payments related to accumulated uncompensated absence benefits. Authorize the award of contract to Garden State Fireworks in Arlington, New Jersey, for the furnishing of Fourth of July fireworks display for the Recreation Department at a cost of $16,500. Authorize the award of contract to Abaya Inc., Newtown, Pennsylvania, for the purchase of telecommunications wire for various departments for the period February 2, 2015, through February 1, 2016, at a cost not to exceed $80,000. Authorize the award of contract to Mesa Consulting, PA, Great Bank, New Jersey, to provide civil engineering, operation management, repair, coordination, scheduling of maintenance procedures associated with education and training of staff in regard to operation procedures for earth, leaven, pool for the Recreation Department in the amount of $17,700. Authorize the proper city officials to enter into an emergency solutions grant contract with the Urban League of Union County, Inc., Elizabeth, to provide funds in the amount of $8,608 for homeless prevention, rental assistance, and case management for the period July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015. The next item has been removed from tonight's agenda because there is no Chapter 2.92. You heard a reading of the resolutions. What is your pleasure?
Move the resolution for a vote, Madam President.
Move then second, and are there any remarks? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Grover?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Canary?
Aye.
Councilman Sodano?
Aye.
Councilman Gollman?
Aye.
Councilman Maza?
Aye.
President Perkins-Augusti.
Aye, more resolutions passed.
Amend the resolution adopted October 14, 2014, authorizing the extension to a contract with the Elizabeth Conservancy for the demolition of a foundation located at 42433 Avenue between Red Cliff and Doyle Streets for the construction of the agency's environmental education center and gardens, specifically to extend the period of the contract to October 31, 2015, due to construction delays and inclement weather conditions. Authorize the award of a contract to Rabbit Pump and Meter Service Company, Inc., Patterson, New Jersey, for the restoration and flood mitigation from Matana Park, Trenton Avenue, and Kepkowski Road pump stations due to hurricane sanding-related damages for the total bid amount for items IV and II through IX at a cost of $399,340. And tonight, there was a resolution for Mr. Malika Jackson, pay utility bills, approval and raffle licenses.
You heard a reading of the resolutions. What is your pleasure?
Move the resolution for a vote, Madam President.
Move then second, and are there any remarks?
Yes, Madam President.
Please pass me.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I just asked my colleagues to support this evening, the extension of the contract for the Elizabeth Conservancy. As was noted to the inclement weather and some other unforeseen circumstances, they have not been able to proceed with the construction and the demolition that they were planning. And I really can't wait for them to be able to move forward so we can see a nice environmental educational center as well as community gardens there in the second ward. So, I would say that I just asked my colleagues that they support this. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other remarks? Madam President, this council?
I would hold my heart and this support at the beginning when we authorize $172,000 in order to purchase a piece of land where we could have our children to go and learn how to do, how to planting and do gardening, mow flowers, whatever it is. Tonight, I see we have a figure, we arrived to a million dollars, council. Do you know we arrived to a million dollars? Is that what we're voting tonight? So, here, we all have a copy on a desk.
We're not voting on that tonight, council. All we're voting on is the extension of the, of the, of the contract, that's it. So, that number is probably already, we're not changing that number.
No, what I'm saying is, I know exactly, we extended because of the weather, whatever contract, or when we voted originally, okay, to purchase, to clean up, and then through voluntary services or whatever, special grant, to come up and take care of this particular section. I know where it is located. Okay, I was originally one of the person who wrote the letter, recommendation for the individual to come up with idea. But we're gonna reach out to a million dollars? I mean, you know, this is a question that I'm asking. We got this, I'm not less. If this figure has to be inside of us, under any way that we have to vote and is not there, I can't support a million dollars when the economy is so bad. But $172,000 and whatever the first raise that we did, yes, a wall of favor to see a garden where our children, our students will be going. Otherwise, we do our classes in science and whatever that teaches, you know, students how to plant, how to grow flowers, tomato plants and whatever. But for the future to spend a million dollars for the small garden and to bring children occasionally to a trip, you know, it's not an easy task. Thank you so much for your explanation.
Anybody else wish to make any comments?
I do.
Yes, council?
I think it's, I need to clarify. It's my understanding that this project budget was created back in October 2012. Councilman's right, initially, the cost for the land acquisition and demolition, et cetera, totaled about $217,000. I believe there were grants obtained for the construction of a building and other work that has to be done in order for the environmental education center and garden to be created. Obviously, once you demolish everything on the property, you're not gonna run a program standing out in the middle of barren soil. So, I don't think that any of this money is coming from our budget. I could be wrong, maybe, Madam Clerk, you can find out. But I think we did get some grant money for this. But regardless, tonight, all we're doing is amending the original resolution, asking that the contract be extended until the end of this fall, which will be October 31, 2015, to give this group time to complete what they set out to do back in 2012.
Yes, any other comments?
Madam President, if I may. Thank you. I just wanna say that that's absolutely correct that the Councilman Grover's saying. They did get grants, they are also raising money privately and getting money from foundations. This is just an overall budget that they have so that they can complete this project. All the money is not being provided by the city or the county or others. There is some money, but it's not what we're providing by the city. Thank you.
You're welcome. I think it's an excellent project and it's probably long overdue. So, hopefully, this extension will allow them to continue to inhabit all of our residents and students to enjoy.
Thank you.
Any other, roll call?
Councilman Questa?
Aye.
Councilman Grover?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Canary?
Aye.
Councilman Sodano?
Aye.
Councilman Gollman?
Aye.
Councilman Maza?
Aye.
President Perkins-Augusti.
Aye, more resolutions passed. Are there any accommodations? Any accommodations, seeing none? Okay, memorials will stand for the memorials. Stanley Moskowitz, Mrs. Helen Orbach, who is the mother of Judge Richard Orbach, Richard Higginson, a former welfare investigator, hazard inspector here for the city of Elizabeth, and Josephine Macario.
Madam, could I have another name?
Sure.
Mrs. Giacobi, G.I.A.C.O.B.B.E. I will be the commission, as City Clerk.
Okay, are there any other memorials? God will stand for the memorials. The government stands for the memorials.